I'd like to call this meeting to order.
All right, folks.
Wednesday, October 10th. We've got some students here.
Somewhere. Would Addison and Matthew, Addison Tate and Matthew Pearson, please come up and do the pledge? These are our high school students.
Tonight, yep.
Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution. For which it stands.
Justice for all. Thank you very much.
You did good.
Yeah, do we have some tickets for that? Oh. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the high school staff asked me to just read a couple of words about our students. These are two students who are in Mrs. Crum's CAD class, and they're working on a project to redesign some of the entrances for the Hopkinton Fair. This opportunity provides them a real-world, authentic application for their skills, and it will also help them greatly with their aspirations to pursue careers in architecture after high school, which I have to say is something I always dreamed of doing as a kid, but I think it really might have been an obsession with Legos. So I hope that you actually do that work, because it's wonderful work. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
On the roll call attendance, we'd rather have a roll call attendance, we're just gonna have a roll call of who's here and introduce yourself and what school district you're at. Larry Heath is not here. He has been excused. Pam, I'm sorry, Pam. Phillips, okay, so Adam, you wanna start, Shu?
Sure. Adam O'Rourke, student representative to the school board from Sanborn Regional High School.
Corey Mason, Newton School Board member.
Jim Baker, Town of Newton School Board member.
Karen Lytle, Kingston.
Tammy Mahoney, member at large.
Ambrose Newton.
Pete Broderick, Kingston.
Tom Ambrose, Superintendent Sanborn Regional School District.
Sue Levine, Fremont School Board.
Sue Penny, Business Administrator for Fremont School District.
Alan Hutton, Fremont Superintendent Schools.
Brittany Thompson, Fremont School Board member.
Angela O'Connell, Fremont School Board member.
Gordon Mensch, Fremont School Board member.
Yeah, he's not on here, but we can, how are we doing? Okay, I can see Greg here.
Yeah, I'm back, pause for a second.
Fremont School Board member.
Greg Fraser, Fremont.
Can you guys turn Greg up a little bit?
Can we turn Greg up a little bit? Okay.
Turn it up?
Greg, can you speak so we can hear you?
Yep, Greg Fraser, Fremont. Sorry, my computer got stuck for a second.
Okay, first discussion, discussion is the NASDAQ study.
Can we call the meeting to order?
No! Not used to you being here, of course.
I'm sorry. Sue was gonna...
Yep, so we're gonna call our Fremont School Board meeting to order and officially begin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was good you got right into it.
Would you like to start?
I can start on the NASDAQ study if you'd like me to.
Why not start? We would rather laid back.
I thought that, well, that's a matter of opinion combined. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay.
No, I think that it, oh, you guys, that's really hot. Sorry, I'm a musician and I'm used to calling microphones hot. That's very bright. Can you hear me okay out there? All right, great. Felt like I was yelling into a too loud microphone. We've been working hard on the NASDAQ study, and essentially where we're at as an organization is we have had one public hearing to have input from the community regarding the NASDAQ study. And in addition to that, we've posted a public survey on the internet, and we've received over 500 responses. And that will close on Friday. So in terms of process, the next step will be that the board will take a look at the survey results, which are not votes per se, but just feedback and questions, and deliberate on a direction to advise or request the administration to do some deeper studies. So it does seem as though some themes are emerging. The first theme that's emerging so far in the feedback and process has been that folks understand that there's, that we certainly are running four buildings for 1,600 students, and we have a high school that's been built for 1,100 students that only currently houses 650. And parents in the community have a lot of questions and concerns about what it would be like if their seventh and eighth grade or sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students were at a building with high school students. And I'm sure that folks in your community, because I did send the community the survey to Fremont as well, and asked for them to ask questions and feel free to be involved, so I hope they'll do that. They probably wonder what would this look like for the high school programming. And honestly, we haven't done an in-depth study yet, because the board is just gathering preliminary information to make a decision about which options to ask the administration to go deeper and look at, because it takes a long time to really research every little issue. So the administration has also been meeting and talking about potential questions and concerns. And my hope is that there will be some direction from the board over the next six weeks as to what the next steps are in this process. And we will be discussing this in more detail at the October 24th meeting.
Any comments from Kingston Board, Sanborn Board? Do you have any questions, comments? I know this is, some of this may be somewhat new to you. I know you know we're doing it, but do you have any questions or...
Is all of the survey information and comments going to be made public? So that information being online as well?
I really think that transparency in this type of process is critical. And so there's nothing in the survey that's any surprise. I mean, I had one person bring up the other day at a meeting that, well, there's a wellhead in the middle school and it feeds water to the memorial school, so what would that look like if the building closed? Perfect, right? This is the kind of thing that we want to come to light now, so that we can review it and be prepared should there be a transition and have it be... My goal, if there is a transition of any kind in our organization, is that it's well thought out, carefully planned, and done in a way that is relatively seamless to children, so that after four weeks or so, it's like the first few days of school have worn off and we're just in business. So that's the vision of the end of whatever it is that we do. One thing that people have wondered about is the Articles of Agreement, and we do have Articles of Agreement that state that we have to house an elementary school in each of our communities. And that would be Newton and Kingston. And the Articles of Agreement are clear that it is defined as an elementary school, which is defined by current statute as grades one to six, or grades one to eight, or K to six and K to eight. And our Articles of Agreement actually specifically say first grade. It was written a long time ago prior to kindergarten being required. I did have a good conversation with one of our local folks who has been highly involved in the schools for many decades, Jim Doggett, who's on the Budget Committee. And Mr. Doggett shared with me that in 1976, the town agreed to create the middle school for grades seven and eight. So at that time, they were thinking that sixth grade would stay at Baking Memorial, but what happened is when the building opened, there was sufficient capacity for sixth grade, so the board decided to have sixth grade go to that building. And that's the history of how this came about. I've been working pretty hard to figure it all out and make sure that I understand the... You know, we have small communities and there's a lot of long memories, rightfully so, and that's what makes our communities nice, but it also makes change really hard sometimes. So we're trying to take it slow and listen.
Okay, update on...
I'm sorry, I have another question.
No, go ahead.
The question person, so I apologize. My, another question is, I know, I believe it was two to three years ago, middle school did come to the high school for a short amount of time.
Yeah, the snow.
With the snow in the roof and so forth.
Eighth grade students only.
It was only eighth grade, okay. I was gonna ask about that and kind of any insights and learnings that that would have also given.
Yeah, I think that, well, the one thing is, is that the kids were fine, but the insight is, don't do it in a month or three days, because they literally on Tuesday got a phone call saying kids are coming Monday. So that certainly made everyone aware that doing this mindfully and thoughtfully and carefully if there is a change, which again, I just wanna say for the camera and the community, no decisions have been made. We are only in our infancy of having a look at what the possible outlining of our district could be. And there are many, I think 12 different options in the NASDAQ study. And if anyone out there has not read it yet, you don't have to read the whole thing. You can just, you could email me. I've got a one-pager that kind of explains all the different layouts that we've given out to the community at different meetings and have posted on the web. It is an 85-page document that could be daunting, but the synopsis is, is do we move our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students to this building? And do we reconfigure our elementary schools or not? In order to reconfigure the elementary schools, it would have to be a change in our Articles of Agreement. But the seventh and eighth grade students and potentially the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students could come to this building without rewriting that. I think that, answer your question even more clearly, it really... If we are going to have middle school kids in this facility, they need to have a middle school learning experience. And for me, as a former middle school guidance counselor, it's critical, because I understand the developmental needs of middle school students, having worked with them for a number of years. And also the developmental needs of high school students, which I've also worked with, and it's very different. They're at different stages in the terms of their cognitive development. And so we have to make sure to maintain the small group teaming of a middle school model with that really warm community for our children. That's the most important thing. And whatever planning we do, aside from the transition being smooth, is that the layout of the process and the feeling of a school housed within this facility is very important to me. Can't really do that when you have five days' notice. They kinda just tried to put people where it was comfortable and safe.
I have one more question.
No.
At this point, one more. So it was stated that the high school was built to house 1,100. It's currently housed 650. Can you talk a little bit about how the, are rooms being unoccupied? Is it the number of students per class that could be increased? Just to kind of understand, like, if you were ever to go up to that 1,100, what would that look like? Or even if you increase it by 100 or 200 or 300?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, currently every staff member at the high school can use their classroom for planning. There aren't really any teachers who aren't, are working out of an office and then have to go to different classrooms. I don't really know exactly what the layout would be yet, because the board hasn't directed the administration to go that deep, right? So I do know at this point that the middle school would currently require roughly 14 full-size classrooms. So I know that much. But it's important to note too, that based on the NASDAQ study, and honestly, looking at our first and second grade enrollments right now, we are having an enrollment decrease. So although things might be a little more compacted in the first few years, we can see clearly with students that we actually have in the system right now, that there is a decline over the next eight or nine years. The question is the unborn or unmoved-in children nine or 10 years from now that we don't know, right? So it's not really so much what would happen in the next four or five years. It's, even NASDAQ themselves said, look, it's a crystal, we don't have a crystal ball. We're just telling you what our research says. And typically, our research is within a 10% margin, so we build in that 10% margin.
What is the enrollment in your first grade right now?
I don't have that memorized, I'm sorry. I can look it up.
No, I can look it up too.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look it up. I just don't have it memorized, I'm sorry.
I would say that personally, I'm a little reserved on the NASDAQ information. Our study was significantly off, which again, it's the data and the science, or the art and the science, and that was the science piece of it. And the art, life happens, and kind of shifted it. And so we have not seen the consistent decrease that they had forecasted for us by this time.
Exactly.
And again, like you said, it's an art and a science.
And it is, it is interesting, because I'm willing to bet that it's not perfect, but I am willing to say that I know what's, I know our elementary numbers right now are roughly 250 and 350 per school. I just don't have it per grade, right? So if you take four classes out of that group, you're looking at 350 or so high school students when they get there, you know? And plus, whatever students, hopefully Fremont still sends to us, because we love to have them, we don't know what the next, you know, what the school will look like at that time, except that we're working really hard to make this the best program that we can. And my hope is that more students will come and we'll deal with that when we get there, right?
My experience, I have a little experience in demographics, and one of the things that I picked up on NASDAQ was where the growth is. And that's Portsmouth and Manchester. Our growth is senior citizens. But they also sit to people moving out of Manchester and Portsmouth to areas that they can still get to quickly. If you look at our geographic location, down 125 from 101, you're a sneeze from 121, you know, in your home, you know? I'm not 121, 101. So I think you may see increases that we wouldn't necessarily see, because anybody works in Portsmouth or Manchester or even Conquah, they're another 20 minutes closer than we are. Takes me 45 minutes to get Conquah. Take you 35 minutes, 30 minutes, you know? So you're a little more attractive to where the growth in New Hampshire is, as far as moving in.
Plus, you send your high school students to us and it's pretty fun.
Okay.
So one last question on that, the survey that is open right now, is, are students also taking part in that survey?
We are not having students, we did not survey students at this time. We're focused on the tax-paying adults. Yeah, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't talk with students or work with them, we always do. But right now, we're looking for kind of the layout. It was a huge, think about it, it really wouldn't be prudent to ask second graders at this time, but high school kids in the future, as we work on things, we would wanna talk to them.
Right.
Jeremy? Question, have you all taken the survey?
No.
I haven't, I haven't received it, but I'm not a Fremont citizen.
Well, what I did was I shared it on the Fremont Facebook page, which is where I share most things, and then I sent it out in my Constant Contact. Do you all receive that? Do you know how to sign up for that? Because I'd be happy to... Yeah, because you can just sign right up for that. And if you'd like a copy of the survey, I could send it to Alan and she could forward it to your staff too.
Yeah, it's right on the...
It's on the district webpage. Yeah, we want folks to have it.
Yep.
And has that link also been included in the weekly newsletter from the principal for Sanborn High School?
I don't know if Mr. Stack sent it out through his newsletter, I'd have to ask him. But I have over 3,000 people on my Constant Contact with a 50% open rate, and I download his list.
Okay, then great.
So, and I download Baking's list, Memorial, I, all four schools, if you're signed up for the school Constant Contact, when I created that list, I took it. And now folks who just are new would need to sign up.
Yeah, that's right.
I have one more question about, I mean, because this conversation's about enrollment, we don't really meet a whole lot. Your enrollment numbers have down like 20 over the last five years. Is there a concern, or is there an increase or anything that we should know, or maybe the public should know to hear about our future high schoolers that are gonna come to this building? Do you see an enrollment trend changing at all by chance?
We had, our current freshman class was, I think, about 55. And then from there, we're about 40, 40 to 45 down to kindergarten. And it's very steady, so...
Well, we haven't seen a decrease in the projections originally, where that every year we were gonna have C O D decrease down, and we have not. So we've been holding between the 45 and 40.
We did have a dip after this current year freshman class. We have a dip, and then we're very consistent studying.
And did that happen, I'm not from New Hampshire, but I know that 101 is somewhat new, right? Not new, but it's been widened. Yeah, so there was a period where that road became a more major artery, right?
That hasn't really impacted...
That hasn't impacted you? Okay, I was just curious.
There was just a boom of housing in 2004, 2003, 2004, and so forth. So there was a boom of housing in Fremont, and a lot of new families moved in, and so forth, myself being one. And then that's exactly, so 2000 to like 2004, there was a huge boom in housing.
Okay.
101 was widened to double lanes in like 91, if that went maybe what you referred to.
It was a while ago.
Okay, update on memorandum of understanding.
I talked to Michelle, and she, Michelle is not feeling well. She caught it. Yeah, sorry, Alan.
It's okay.
I did wanna say that from the central office perspective of our business manager, it's been very good that things are clear and easy, easy to use. And in fact, we went from a large number of questions, concerns, or discrepancies last year, each time we talked about billing, to one this time. And if you, would you agree?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we really appreciate the teamwork to straighten that out. It's been stress-reducing for many central office employees.
I agree.
Great, any questions on that?
Shared goals.
Would you like to share your goals first?
I'll share.
Of course.
If there's only a copy of a rose, do you have extra?
Of course, thank you. It's because Sue Perry did that.
She's good. Oh, look at that. You get a star. I left my big bag on, that's what I want.
You have the carry. Try.
I usually do.
Just to set the stage for this, we, the Fremont School Board meets in, at the end of each school year in June, and does kind of a reflection on how we have done on our goals for that year. And at that time, we also draft, I actually, they used to do this in August, and I asked them to do it in June, because we have a lot of staff who sets the groundwork during the summer with some work they do. So we establish those goals. And from the four goals that you see here, an action plan is developed by the administrative team with roles and responsibilities. Throughout the school year, when we have a board meeting, every administrator's reports, reports highlights on items related to the goals that they have accomplished. They may share data, there may be a presentation about that, there may be student presentations about some of the work that's occurred. But we try to tie everything we can back to these four goals that are our focus for our work for the year. We'll let the board members speak any, about specific goals if they would like to do so.
I think one of the ones that we've touched on the last time we met is our first goal. And one of the things that we've been having a hard time pinpointing is a consistent metric that we can use to measure student proficiency. And so just curious if, I know you guys had some work underway with regard to that, if you had anything that you were using as a board to measure? Because we wanna look at, we know that NEWS look at student growth over the year, and that's good, but if we're looking at as a whole school, how are we doing for our kids? And how do we compare to other schools? We haven't, since the, now I have NASDAQ in my head and I can't get the other, no, the...
The state assessment continues to change.
When it got replaced with Smarter Balance, we haven't had a consistent measurement. And so I'd be interested to know if you, if you have anything that you found to measure.
To measure...
Student proficiency, more, not at the student level, because it's important to do that for the teachers to do that, but as a school board, how we measure our own impact is broader than that, so...
Well, I think that that's something that we just, we just had a meeting about for almost an hour, and I think that ISA committee folks, feel free to chime in here, but I think that we've worked really hard on coming up...
ISA is excellent in student achievement.
Yeah, we have a committee that works on this. And I think that one thing that we have been looking at is we worked really hard last year to collaboratively develop a series of indicators for career and college readiness, which is our definition of student success in essence. And it really is, it was based on the proposed language in the rewrite of the No Child Left Behind Act, which is now called, help me, Alan, I'm trying to, the acronyms are eluding me this evening.
It's okay.
Anyway, so the state had their presentation for the federal law, and we liked what was in there. So we took that and added some things and tweaked it a little bit to create this definition. And what we're doing now is we're asking the juniors and seniors, the guidance counselors, to go through all their transcripts and tell us kind of which kids have met this, what's going on, where are we, where are we for a baseline in terms of having students be career and college ready based on this new definition? And what do we need to do to move that forward? So I think that then that information will splay out into obviously reading, math, scores for younger students. But it's bigger than that, because it's also about who are you as a person? You know, if you do a, if you do a vocational program and get a certificate, that's one of the indicators that counts. And it kind of ties into, you know, our goals that we, one of our goals was to assess where we are without effectiveness of the definition of student success. So in a similar way, one of our goals mirrors your first goal. We're really trying to figure out how to address the holistic student. And so we're starting there. And certainly, if you'd like to take a look at that document, you're welcome to bar with.
I have seen that document, and it works well with the end product of high school students. What we're producing to end the world. We're trying to prepare students to enter high school.
All right.
So we need to think about it differently. And I think it's, there's, it's a different, more difficult to have a common set of measures.
And I think it's great that you guys have set that too, but I, and I think it's, if you set a baseline and then you can progress and track progress on your baseline. But it also doesn't necessarily allow you to compare yourselves to other districts, because they may not be measuring that...
The same things.
That data, so...
So have you created your own local assessment on what student proficiency means? Or are you using a state model?
Well, obviously, the state assessments are given at the grade levels that are required. There are individual assessments given across the curriculum, but, but that's difficult to measure against other schools outside our parameters. We can say how our kids are doing, and we can track them over time.
So I guess that you're answering my question. So you've actually established local parameters. Would you actually say, what is the definition of success and proficiency mean to us locally? Have you done that?
We have developed the competencies that identify those to different areas, correct.
And so then your challenge, I'm hearing you say, is aligning it to the state?
No, Sue's challenge is, the board would like to have us be able to assess how well our students have, how well as a whole school we are meeting those standards. And if our students are as prepared as other students at another sixth grade 50 miles away, are we preparing our students to move out into the world?
There's a gentleman named John Tanner, you might know his name, Mr. Ambrose and many others. He actually helped champion the project for PACE here. He's done work in Maine as well. I'll put you in touch with him, his name's John Tanner. He works with TestSense, he's an international guru. Not a big fan of that A through S system that we hear an awful lot about, but at the same time, it's because he's trying to make sure that the A through F has got integrity behind it. But regardless, I, he actually has worked with, the local assessment worked with all of PACE districts and what have you. And again, his name's John Tanner. I'll put you in touch with him, I recommend you read his book as well. I'm pretty confident that he could take what you're trying to achieve, advise to you, and then maybe even link it back to the work trying to do here locally, which is probably the bigger discussion, because there's that handoff.
So just out of curiosity, do you have any kind of measurement or data that you're looking at with the middle school and elementary in terms of assessing proficiency? To see whether, as a school board, we're, you know, are we getting better in math? Are we getting better in English in the district? Or is that not something that you guys are...
No, I mean, it totally is. I mean, but there's multiple measures of these kinds of things. And for having, in my work as a K-2 principal, I always thought of, you know, you really wanna think of at least four points that you can look at from a data perspective. So one thing that we look at is the Fanta's and Pennell's scores for our students. What, how are they doing on their reading comprehension, sight words, letter sound fluency? Basic numeracy in kindergarten are real big indicators of what's going to happen in the future. And then we are also constantly reviewing the PACE data, the SBACK data. The, for those of you who don't know acronyms, that's the acronym for the state assessment, which I can't remember.
Smarter Balance.
I'm having an acronym cramp this evening, there's so many of them. But the Smarter Balanced Assessment, it kind of helps us, because what we've seen is that the PACE assessments that the state has worked so hard to create, and this district in particular, are showing a sincere congruence to the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is great, because they're embedded in the curriculum, so they're real-time assessments. And the teachers know what the assessment is going to be, so they're working with the kids to get them ready for it. So we look at all of those data points, including but not limited to PSAT... So we look at all of those data points, including but not limited to PSAT, SAT, you know, all of those typical high school, uh, uh, assessments. What we're noticing is that there's a real difference in our students that are bound for four-year college because they're doing fine on the SAT. The students who are looking to a two-year or technical degree don't do as well on the SAT and the students who are going in the military or working on internships or are planning to go to the world or work, they, they know at that age that the SAT is not something that they need to spend a lot of time on. And so we're trying to figure out how to motivate them to take the test seriously because it's, I'm not convinced that it's 100% skill that's causing some of our dips in the SAT scores, partly because the, the SBAQ data that previous to that is pretty strong and when we have them take the PSAT and we follow up with the Khan Academy or, or other online math programs, they're engaging and doing fine in those. So it is really hard to get a line on, you know, where they are once they get to that post-eighth grade level and, and we've talked at the board level that honestly, there's a point where kids mature and they're tested out, so to speak. My, my son's thirteen years old and he's like, I'm not, I don't care, you know? And I told him, I said, I don't really wanna discuss that, you have to get the test, right? But, but the reality is, is that, that they're not, they're smart, they're savvy and so we're trying to figure out how to engage them in their world, right? Which is very different than the one that we grew up in with all of this technology. So I think it's really important to recognize that multiple data points are really important and Alan, to your point, I would agree with you that our list is definitely high school centric, but I think that we're also taking a look at all of these other indicators and backward planning, that that would be part of the process that, you know, I mean, certainly if you can't read by the end of second grade, research shows that reading to learn is really, really hard and you're gonna fall further behind or if you don't have basic numeracy skills, it's pretty hard to solve, solve word problems. And word problems are our old fashioned term for real world math, right? When we were kids, we got two at the end of the worksheet and now the kids are getting all their work is in quote word problems, right? So reading is a bigger part of math than it's ever been. I don't know if that helped, I don't really know, I mean-
I, I just was curious if you had any best practices to share and it sounds like, you know, you guys have your, um, focus that you're working on and we're, that's one of our goals for the year is to try to, um, develop some data points, so it's always good to, I think, find out, A, are we being consistent and B, are there any, um, best practices that we're not, you know, aware of?
Yeah. Mr. Sherman? That's something that I'm very interested in. So as you progress on that, I'd sure like to kind of get updated on what you come up with, cause I, I agree that, um, knowing where you stand in your own district and people performing according to a certain criteria is important, but you also wanna know how you're doing across the board, you know? Are your kids really prepared, are they really competitive? And, um, that's something that a lot of people on this board have been advocating for, I'm not sure we're there yet. So any help you could give us would be great.
And, and we would be happy to collaborate, Alan and I could talk about it and ask Mr. Tumel what he's thinking and we, you know, if there's any professional development, you know, we wanna keep the door open to share professional development opportunities.
I mean, I think what, what I'm looking for as a board member is to know that, okay, three years ago when I started on the board, the kids were scoring X on math and now we've put this math support in, we've done this, we've done that, are they scoring better? And, and how, if they're not scoring better, then how do they fit in the context of our peer group? Is everyone having a dip? And the same thing with reading, cause to me, as a board, we can't, we can't influence what an individual child is, whether they're meeting their growth targets, that's what we have, the, the administration and the teachers, that's what they're focused on, but as a, as a board member, I would like to focus on holistically seeing, knowing that our school is trending in a positive direction, because if we're not doing that, then to me, that's, that's the whole point of why we're here.
Yeah, that's the work.
So, and if, and if we're not measuring it, then how do we know? So, that's-
No, and one good point that was mentioned is there's multiple points of data instead of maybe just one and that might be something that we look at, instead of just looking at one, we look at a few different layers of it and especially because it's the art and the science again, the numbers don't say everything, so kind of, kind of balance those two.
We used to have what I called information walls, where you would color code the score, yellow, red or green, green being on target, blue being way above, yellow being one or two levels below and red being more than two levels below, but there was also information about the students, about who they were as a person. And, and we would look at that in small group meetings weekly and say, how so-and-so doing, what are they working on, what's the direction? And if you don't have multiple data points, you might miss what the real problem is. Diagnosis and treatment really, like the medical field.
Do you guys wanna speak to any of our other goals?
Dr. Brownhead?
Do you guys have questions?
Um, I just wanted to point out our new framework for student success, it does focus on the capstone grades, the high school level success, um, but we do also have a five-year strategic plan, which has targeted outcomes for third, fourth, fifth and eighth grades and we're looking at different measures, assessments and what we'd like to see happen over two, three, four years. So currently, we're only looking at the high school success indicators and giving students choices for SATs, proficiencies, ACT scores, armed forces qualifying tests, because not every student intends to go to college immediately, because there's been such a fixation on the SATs that we may be succeeding, we don't know it, if you look at where they end up eventually advancing to in life. So, but now we're also looking at individual grade levels and we've asked the teachers in our school district to give us what they would like to see in terms of indicators used and progress they think can be made and resources needed. So that's currently what we're working on. Our original five-year strategic plan was ten pages long, the font was like eighteen font, um, there were some pictures in it and it was one goal to become a top ten percent performing district. So now we've really got a longer document and we're working on filling in these indicators, but we'd like to gather the data and then see where we've come from, are we actually making progress or not? I'm sure we have the data, but, um, we wanna get it aggregated and then, um, really look at what we can do to improve the scores over time. As someone who teaches in California, I can assure you, our New Hampshire students are outstanding, um, compared to other states, so I really feel like we have nothing to complain about at this time, but I'd sure like to see some of these scores increased. Um, and it depends on the student and where they end, what they'd like to go in life. College isn't for everyone, in fact, I think it's not always the best option for many people, but we're working on the data, so I think that's very important. Um, it's taking time, but hopefully we'll have something done by the end of this year as far as trends, so.
Thank you.
Well, we also have our other two, uh, goals here for the year, review the Nezdek study and come up with our best use recommendation for our resources and that includes our facilities, that might be a two-year goal rather than a one-year goal and also our second goal is to update all of our policies, because we have many that are, and it's, again, the regulations change, so we can't blame the prior school board, when things change, you have to skirt, really hustle to catch up, but that's our other big goal for the year. We've got a couple of, um, contracts we're working on, so we've got a lot to do.
Policy work is never done.
It's fun, too.
Yeah, we, well, anyway. Okay. Thank you. Oh, and I, we didn't do a nifty difty, I, I love this, we didn't do one of these for you, but I did send you the PowerPoint presentation Alan to share with your board. Thanks, this is great, I love this, so.
I didn't do it.
Wow, whoever did it, it's awesome. You want the next one, Pete?
Okay. Fiscal nine, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty goals.
So, uh, is this, I, I guess I was kind of wondering, um, how to click, to clarify FY nineteen and twenty goals?
I think it's, it's how, how are you doing on everybody?
Me?
I know. I feel like I was doing the same thing, I think maybe you suggested that one. I, I think it was just different wording, so I think what, really what we're looking at is, um, it's crazy, we just started the new fiscal year, the new school year and we're already budgeting for next year.
Right.
So I think it was really kind of like, do you have any insights, any, um, things that you already know that's on your radar, your docket that you're working towards or you're working on or things, you know, just to, again, try to keep the communication flowing, um, both if there's things that we need to be aware of that would be impacting the high school, but then also are there things that, um, that there may be opportunity for us to work together to kind of collaborate and I know sometimes we've talked about before about like maybe supplies purchases or contracts together or things like that. So I, I, that's kind of where my, my thoughts were on the guidance.
Great, no, I, I, yeah, I mean, we're, we're just starting the budget process and we've had a couple of meetings with administrators, but really, I, I, I feel like I'm always in budget process because I'm always looking for strengths, weaknesses, what can I reallocate, how can I use things or help people to, to get the, their needs met? Uh, one thing I will say is that our professional development money that was put in our budget out last year has been fantastic. We have, uh, had a, a great start with our relationship with Columbia University, we have a number of teachers who have gone down for training, they'll be coming here to provide training and I have three administrators going next week for a very exclusive leadership training for three days, working with some of the best minds in education in the world. And the best part about that one is that they'll be visiting the schools that their teachers teach in and seeing the teaching in real time, which to me is the most powerful way to learn because that's, you see the, the theory in, in being applied. In terms of budgeting, we have a BudCon meeting tomorrow night, we're talking about high school class sizes, you know, we are having declining enrollments, some of the classes are small and we have needs for math support and I presented at the, a recent board meeting that, you know, really my entry plan led, led me to believe that, that there are two primary areas that need to be addressed in the next four, four or five budget cycles. The first one is that we don't have what I feel to be adequate intervention for students prior to special education referral in all of our grades. So that's a pretty big ticket item and the, the rough estimate is about 1.5 million dollars, so, I mean, we really don't have it. It's, we have two paraprofessionals at the Bakey School right now, working on math and reading and they're Title One funded and those paraprofessionals are not special ed. We have special ed paras for all kinds of kids who have IEPs, but for kids who are just behind, we don't really have that and then, and then at the Memorial School, we have two paraprofessionals that, one for math and one for reading and at the middle school, we have one and a half and then I kind of scraped around to pay for another half to help because we really couldn't cut that back, the grant was, wasn't funded at the level that it normally is. At the high school, we have paraprofessionals for special education, but we don't have support for students who are struggling in math, which really concerns me in light of the math scores. So really to me, budgeting and scores, eh, information about our students are closely linked. So I think that the best, the healthiest way to do this is to look at the data that we were just discussing, say, okay, this is what we're seeing and as you said, what, what are we doing about it? And one thing that I'm not a big proponent of is changing gears all the time. I don't like to try something for one year and see how it worked. I like to try something for a year and then see what worked, what didn't work, change it just a little and then see what happens next, because people get good at what they do and if we're constantly changing what professionals do, then they never get good at anything. So, so that's why I'm really committed to the workshop instruction and the professional development for that and our, and our budget will reflect that, but I do think it's important for the parents to hear that we have paraprofessionals for special ed, we don't for students who are in regular ed who need some extra help. We have very few. And, and conversely, we have professional development funds, but the needs are significant because we're really addressing writing and reading right now, not math on the level that I'd like to. Finding math PD is hard, so if y'all know a good math professional developer, I'd love to meet some more people, for some reason, there's a real need in math professional development and somebody out there is gonna find a great career doing high quality PD for math, cause it is very hard to find.
I think another question that came up Superintendent Ambrose is, I know last year was a challenge in some ways, cause you had to cut some positions. What effect, if any, do you feel as though that has had on class sizes, particularly here at the high school where we're sending students?
Well, it's really, it's, uh, interesting because, uh, I feel like our class sizes have gone up some, but it's in part because the positions that were reduced at the high school were primarily elective positions, so based on enrollments, Mr. Stack really felt that, that ironically, despite our math issues, he let go of a math position when someone left, because the numbers weren't as high in math at that time and then we had over thirty students move in over the summer. So we're looking at the, the, the numbers right now, but our numbers in terms of gross class sizes are not very high. Uh, I, I feel that there, uh, there is some room to reallocate some resources potentially, but I haven't had the opportunity to do that yet because it's so early in the process. But to answer the, the, I know that the burning question for you all is you send your students here and two and a half or three, three and a half positions were cut, what did that do? Well, we lost family and consumer science, so some of the components of family and consumer science are being taught in health classes. We did, uh, move our chorus in, choral teacher to be half-time at the middle school and half-
Can I say a silly question? What, what's covered under family and consumer science, like you give me an idea of that?
Well, eh, eh, a wide variety of course topics are covered, but I think that the most important things that were transferred, so for example, there was a really wonderful quilting program and I'm not sure that that's gonna continue.
So Greg, it was home economics when we were-
Yeah.
When we were kids. When we were kids.
I'd have to ask for a specific curriculum outline of what was eliminated and what was kept, but what is kept is based on the state standards that have to be taught to be con, for competencies. And then the, the, the chorus teacher went from half-time at the high, full-time at the high school to half-time at the middle school and half-time in the high school based on enrollments. Mr. Stack and I had quite a round and round about the math position, but he's the principal and I decided to support him. We'll see how that goes this year. And then, uh, um, I think that one other position that was eliminated was an English position. Oh, uh, I'm sorry, thank you, it was French. We had a, a French position that was, uh, full-time at the high school and that became part-time at the middle school, part-time at the high school, thanks Pete, he used to teach at the high schools.
He's right on top.
Yeah, he's right on top.
What was your second thing? You said adequate intervention prior to special ed and then number two-
Oh, thank you.
Blank.
No, that, I apologize, uh, the, I mean, that's a big one, right? The second one is, I really, when I'm combing through the budget, I'm looking for areas that over a three to five year period have not been expended or have had to be reallocated repeatedly or have been, uh, underfunded and then needed to be expanded. Well, what I'm finding out is that in our budget, there are, we don't have very many, what I've called in the past, uh, reserve accounts or contingency areas for emergencies. So we really need to develop clearly defined emergency funds for each department, particularly regular ed, so that's the type of area where if you have, this year, we had a little bit of nervousness right before school started because Bakey had too many enrollments in kindergarten, or far more than projected to be accurate, we'd love more kids, but there's never too many, but more than projected. And so I wanted to, I, I didn't know where I would fund that position from if we had to hire a teacher and it got really close, luckily it leveled out just right at the end. So, so then that would be like a regular ed emergency fund and then there's capital issues, you know, we've had a number of capital issues this year that have been concerning and hair raising. And then there's special education contingency, which is not funded at nearly a high enough level in our organization, in my opinion, and frankly, I had to freeze the budget last February in order to, uh, preserve enough funds, we thought we were going to have three very expensive out-of-district placements simultaneously and frank, thankfully, my, my team worked really hard and, and, and did a great job with a couple of kids, which is great, cause we want them here, we don't want students to go out of district and it's not just about money, it's about kids being in their home community, you know? But we need to make sure that that's covered and, and then the other area is technology. I, I am, uh, very aware of the level of skill that Bob Ficker has with technology, our technology director, and he has been excellent at running it on a very bare bones budget. When you think about the fact that a technology department is the nervous system of a school, school department, if it doesn't work, we're done. Everything's on technology now. It doesn't mean that people couldn't teach without technology, it means that they don't, they don't do it every day, right? They're, every, all their lesson plans, everything's on technology. If you wanna see an elementary school go into orbit, shut off the photocopier at seven thirty in the morning. So I, I definitely think that technology was another area, so really, you know, over the next three or four years, we have to work on reallocating resources and increasing funding toward intervention and emergency accounts. And then the other piece is that we're in the midst of negotiations with our teachers, which certainly, we wanna keep our teachers, we have wonderful teachers and we keep losing them to other districts. So teacher retention is one part salaries, one part benefits and one part working conditions, if you really wanna just kind of keep a simple recipe. And honestly, other districts are having them teach less for more pay and better benefits, so we have to figure that out.
Ken? Welcome.
I was gonna say, um, I see two areas where our resource allocation is just not serving the students right now. We're facilities rich- We're facilities rich with salaries poor. Um, we have a middle school that needs to be either, um, overhauled or a new one built, for example. It's definitely at that point. But we have a high school almost brand new that is severely underutilized. A lot of excess capacity here and then declining enrollment. So that's one area that there's a misallocation. We spend more per pupil than higher performing schools. I think that's part of the reason that we have an extra building that we're not using. We have lots of excess capacity here, but a building that needs work, should we keep it? Should we, um, do something else with it? The other problem is compared to high performing schools, um, we're paying more per pupil, but our scores are lower. And, um, we're paying our, our teachers below what high performing students pay, uh, schools pay. So what we need to do is, um, retain the best teachers as we train them. And, um, are also our students to pu- uh, pupil to teacher ratio is below state average and below some of the higher performing schools. So we have fewer classes in each, students in each class, but we're not paying the teachers a lot of money. If we could just up maybe the class size by one or two, so it's up to the state average of 12.1. We're slightly below that. And then take that money and then spend it on our teachers. So they're paid better. And they're trained better. Then we'll be up to where the higher performing schools, um, that kind of program that they run. So my concern is, um, we have small classes, we're spread thin with the staff. And if we could just consolidate some of the classes so that they're normal sized classes compared to the high performing districts, we can use that money to pay our teachers more and re- retain those excellent teachers. That seems to be the recipe that works in those districts. So, um, that's what I hope we can think about doing. And we, and math's very difficult to recruit, for example. It's one of the critical shortage areas. But we're not paying our teachers enough to retain and recruit those people.
Pete. Of course. I, I have a question. Like as parent guardians, some of you are. I'm not sure Gordon, if you are, forgive me for not knowing. But, um, like at first blush, how does this conversation and knowing that you're sending students? Like what do you want to see happen? How does this stuff resonate with you all? These conversations?
So I have, um, in full disclosure.
Cause you, I mean, we're.
Jump right in.
Yeah, we're here together.
Because I actually have a freshman in Sanborn this year. So, um, this has been very enlightening for me because, um, I've been a part of the Fremont, um, community and involved with the board and on the board for the last few years and working with Sanborn. Um, so, um, I've been very pleased with the freshman learning community and how it's going. And he's thriving. So right now he's adjusting well and doing well. And so I've been very, very pleased with it. So with my parent hat on, when I hear the, um, the consolidations of the classrooms and so forth, very similar to quite honestly, how we are at Ellis. Could we have another few kids in each of our classes? Absolutely. Would it reduce our cost per pupil? Absolutely. Those fixed costs, those facilities costs then would be spread out across more kids. Um, with that said, um, it would also then reduce what we pay for each student to come here to Sanborn, which again, it would be very attractive to me as a taxpayer. Um, so then, but the other thing is that I would not want to do it at the expense of the experience. And that's my concern. Because, um, there are some classes, um, that I know my son does have 24 kids in, um, and some electives. He actually has 29 kids in one of his electives. And so to hear that there is, you know, possibly bringing in seventh and eighth, like where are the kids going to go? Where are the classrooms going to be? You know, how are those going to be impacted? So quite honestly, that's, you know, that's my personal concern. But then also, um, with us tuitioning in, we want the same level of consistency for the students that we've received for the past 10 years and have been improving. We want that to continue for, you know, the rest of our agreement as well. So we don't want that to differ, if you will, or to suffer at the expense of trying to save, um, you know, money in the short term. So that's just my perspective, if you will, from a few different parent, taxpayer and on board.
Class size is something people always look at and I, everywhere I've been, it's been discussed. It's an easier fix than people realize. It's not as easy of a fix as people realize. Uh, I know we've looked at it in, you know, I'm going to use an example. In third grade, there's 45 kids. We have three third grade classrooms of 15 children. Could someone teach a third grade classroom with 18? Certainly. But 22 or 23? We're going to sacrifice the quality of the experience. So, so we find the numbers right at that tipping point. And it, it's hard to justify what you give up to what you gain. So you have to be careful. It's, it's, it's a difficult numbers game.
I think I spend more money, time than I want to think about going through the high school and the middle school grids. And there are some pretty low numbers in there. There are some that are too high and need to be very careful of those. But there are many that are below 15. And that's where we're trying to seek a balance, um, as enrollment's declining to make sure that, you know, we're getting the best teachers because it does cost money to keep these very small classes going.
Yeah. And we've made those decisions as well. There have been some middle school grades that had three classes, if you will, three. And that we basically put them down to two. So we increased the students per teacher in those. And then brought in like a math specialist as an example. So we've made some of those decisions as well and support that we've needed to. But, um, paying very, it was very close attention. It was very deliberative. And it was always at the, um, the purpose was to improve the education of the students.
The thing, the thing that I, I'm sorry. Thing that I, I have been fighting for 30 years. You have three, I taught biology. So you have three biology classes, 75 kids. You lose 20% of those kids, 15. You're down to 60. Oh, we can get rid of 20% of that teacher. We can get rid of a teacher. No, not unless you want 30 kids per class.
Right.
Because you've still got 60 students, 20. The other thing that, that, that they don't put into the mix, in my opinion, they, you know, the, the, let's reduce students and let's reduce the class size. Do you want to have a school without AP courses? You only run four or five kids in an AP course. But those kids are added into number of teachers, number of students, you know? So yeah, you can, you can, we, we can get rid of French four. You want to get rid of French four or Spanish four? We can get rid of AP calculus. We can get rid of AP trig. Sure. We can get rid of honors, whatever, where there's only 13, 14 kids in a class. We can do that. Is that what you want? You know, and that's, that's where our struggle is. You know, when you get an AP calculus course and those kids are going to be the engineers, those kids are going to be the, you know, the physicists or the, you know? Yeah, w- w- we can, we can do whatever the people don't want to pay for. But I think you'd have a pretty terrible school, you know, personally.
So I have a question. And at Ellis, we have a policy that helps guide us for classroom size. Do you guys have a similar policy that helps guide you?
We do. And we need to have a conversation about that because it's a guide. It's, it's, uh, it's a, it, it, I, I just think it's important for everyone to know that philosophically, I couldn't agree more that the freshman learning community and the sophomore learning community is an effective model to engage kids in school. So we had, uh, I, I'm going to have Mr. Terrell permit, present about this with the high school administration at an upcoming board meeting. He told me that roughly, I'm just going to use some gross numbers and he will validate those at that presentation. But it, we had roughly 130 to 150 failures four or five years ago in the freshman class. They implemented the freshman learning community and it went down to four. So we're talking about a dramatic shift and, and class size does play a card in that. But the question is, where, as Chair Broderick clearly outlined, where's the tipping point? So I did find my, my grid of closer numbers. And so I, I hate not being able to answer a question. So I'm going to answer your question. Um, your, our grade one students for, at 10-1 of 2018 is 94 students. So if you bring in 100, if you have 50 students or 45 students, we're looking at 140. 140 doesn't seem that far off from 175, but when you start looking at SST placements, remember students who go to SST are gone for half the day. And what's happened is that that number's increasing. So we had 100 this year and I'm budgeting for far more next year. And then we've also had students who are taking dual enrollment classes. So it's not just the class size. It's the way that education's being delivered in the modern age is creating a, an interesting dynamic that, that kids are doing internships. They're doing extended learning opportunities. They're taking college classes instead of AP classes. Right? And one thing that I've spoken to the high school administration about is that my expectation is that AP runs at a true AP pace. You, you take AP, it's fast, it's hard and you learn. And if you don't keep up with it, you can drop down at any time. I don't have a problem with that. So we're working on that. The problem is that a lot of our kids who would typically be our highest excelling AP students are taking college classes instead. Through, through New Hampshire, uh, university or NECO or NHSU, is that it? N S H U, S N H U?
Yes.
My acronomitus is getting worse. Uh, but I, I think that it's really important to recognize that, that we had to fund an extra round of dual enrollment courses this summer. And finding the money for that, it was almost $16,000. It was really hard to find, but we worked and scraped budgets and talked about it because the kids at the high school were begging to take those courses. And I see our student rep nodding his head. Yeah. Is there something you'd like to add?
I, uh, I'm in, I've taken both AP and, uh, dual enrollment through SNU. I'm actually in three dual enrollment this year and one AP go- or one AP class. And they're both for me, really awesome options. But I know AP is really, really quick, uh, like Ms. Ambrose said. And, uh, dual enrollment does have the appeal of multiple college credits. Um, that's where most kids get, like their tipping point is, wow, I could take a semester off if I do the, this many, uh, um, this many college courses right now instead of, um, next year or two years from now. Another, another thing is definitely the money is, uh, it's a hundred bucks per course to get full, three to, three to five credits. And, uh,
Are they semester courses? Semester or are they full year? Because typically they're semester in college.
They're, I think they're full year through here.
Okay. The teacher teaches them here.
Oh, the teacher, oh, okay.
They don't go to the campus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know if it was like an online opportunity, like an online.
Yeah, no, great question. I think.
When you're looking at student loan debt being like a huge issue for, for kids, it's smart, it's a smart.
We, we have a curriculum movement afoot through our ISA committee who's chaired by Tammy Mahoney. And, and there's a real conversation going on about whether or not we could offer a, a two-year degree before someone leaves high school. So we're really looking at this seriously. And there's just so many things in the fire right now that the way I feel about the 15 credits would be roughly a two-year, 15 to 20. And, and the question is, can we, can we pull that off? So where, um, Mr. Dawson, the first time director of the high school is working with some people to talk about that option. But it's very much just in the buying ingredients phase. We're not cooking anything yet. So, so I think it's really important to know though, that the future of our work is this dual enrollment kind of thing for particularly our juniors and seniors. So I think about the freshman and sophomore learning community as being the model that we need to continue. My question is, how do we balance some of the lower enrollment courses against some of the higher enrollment courses? We're going to be looking deeply at that this year. I have a meeting about it tomorrow with the principal.
So if I could just say one thing with that is, and it, and it may be, you know, not as applicable at the high school level, but, um, when we look at class size, we've had a lot of feedback, um, from frankly, our budget committee about, um, the, the class size at Ellis. And I mean, Alan already made the point that when you only have three sections, if you reduce, you're making a significant impact to student learning, um, which is different than if you're in Manchester and you have eight sections and you're dropping to seven. But the other piece is, I think it's hard to have a historical memory for the cuts that get made every year. And when you speak to, you know, your first thing being adequate intervention prior to special ed, I mean, we have so many resources that have been stripped away from Ellis. And I don't know if it's similar here or not. I remember being here a couple of years ago when there was talk about a math specialist. And I don't know what happened after that conversation, if that position stayed or went. But, you know, I, I think that, and, and when you talk about, you know, somebody who is a trained math specialist, a certified math specialist and the impact that they have. Um, so, um, we've, we've stripped away a lot of the intervention at, at, at Ellis to, because we didn't want to, we didn't want to increase our classroom size. So those teachers, while they may not have large classroom sizes, they're bearing the weight of everything plus a little bit more. So I just think that when you, when we're having that conversation, that that has to be factored in. And I don't know, again, I, I can't speak to whether that's similar for you guys, but when you mentioned that as your kind of number one thing you were thinking about, um, to me, it seems like that may be a concern as well.
It is, it is. There was a time when there was a much more vibrant intervention program and as student enrollments declined, instead of increasing class sizes in some areas. It did, uh, and intervention was reduced and the math position still exists. But my point to our budget committee and to the board has been, the problem with the math position that we have at the elementary level isn't that it's ineffective. The problem is that it's cut across these schools. When you have one person trying to do math, work with curriculum work with kids and staff across three buildings, we're talking about two thirds of our student population being serviced by one person. It's hard to say that they're ineffective. And the reality is our math scores have stayed stable K8 while the expectations and the assessments has gone higher. So I feel like the, 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 the position is, makes sense. We need more of it. And, and what, what I would say too is that, you know, as you look across, across the, the district, we also have a similar situation where, for example, in, in, in Baki in our first grade this year, we have 17, 18 and 19 students. If you reduce one teacher, then you're going to have classroom sizes of 30. The only spot that there's a lull in our elementary numbers and it's a budget preview for all of you is that, uh, we, we, we have a spot in our current, uh, grade one students at Memorial, but there are some real behavior concerns. So the principal is very, very hesitant to make a change in that without, you, you could make a change, but you end up with a split level grade of a, a one, two split with a couple of paras to help. So you're not saving any money. I mean, there's a diminishing return. And it is, again, I would agree with our board members who have said, everything in this district is like just on the cusp of, if it would drop just a little bit or go up a little bit, it would make a big difference.
I guess my, my thing is just when we compare, um, class size with other districts is that you may not be looking apples to apples. And that's what we always felt like. If we don't have the same resources as some of the other districts, then, um, you know, we're asking our teachers to do more with less. And so, um, you know, and, and we faced a similar, um, challenge with um, making a decision whether to go down to two classes with some behavioral and, and frankly, learning, you know, concerns. Um, and it was tough and we, we did keep the classes, um, you know, we did keep the classes separate, but they are together now. And I mean, there are, there are two now. They went, we went from three to two. And I think there was, you know, I think there was an impact and there was also an impact on those teachers.
Yeah.
And there, you know, it's, it was a, you know, there were some tough, tough years.
You hit on one of the three things I talked about, right? Salary benefits and working conditions. Working conditions of the number of students, the preps, the things that you have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Okay, moving on. Public comment.
Hello, Jamie, it's Patrick from New York. I listen for ticking. Um, I appreciated the discussion during the goals and objectives as to proficiencies and students and measuring outcomes. So I'd like to return to the discussion of grades. Uh, and I look forward to Mr. Terrell's discussion in, uh, the next meeting in two weeks' time. But after hearing last week of the math proficiencies dropping to 30%, I stepped off from the grade level, the elementary level. I took a look at what do we have in the high school rubrics for how do we determine grading in the high school? So in the elementary school, there's two levels of proficiency. We call them exemplary and proficient. And are informed that there's no correlation or mapping to standard grades, A through F. It's completely different, distinct, unique system and they don't map. You go to the high school rubrics and there's exemplary, proficient, and then we add another one called basic proficiency. So a third measure of proficiency. And these are tied to actually numerical numbers with four being the highest. So exemplary, same definition as a grade school, does have a correlation. So exemplary, same definition as a grade school, does have a correlation, and it's three point five to four, which is about eighty-seven and a half percent. Proficient is two point five to three point four nine. Again, there is a correlation to the grade levels, that is sixty-two and a half percent. So at sixty-two and a half percent, we say somebody's proficient. Basic proficiency is one point five to two point four nine. That's thirty-seven and a half percent. In high school, we're defining as that grade level, thirty-seven and a half percent, is basic proficiency. So we accept this as basi- basic proficiency. I'm sorry, we're kidding ourselves, thirty-seven and a half percent is not proficient, it's failing. I don't know why we'd be surprised in two years our students have been at thirty-eight and thirty percent. We have institutionalized a grading system that says thirty-seven and a half percent is basic proficiency. It would seem to me that we're reaping what we sow, uh, and that we really need to reassess our grading throughout the district. Uh, I hope that I'll see the information from Mr. Trammell, I hope there'll be the distribution of students. We see the thirty percent come in, what is the distribution of those students? We have the average, we have no standard deviation, what does a curve look like? That'd be helpful information to have presented so that the public can see what that is. For this member of the public, I, I look, uh, I look forward to the presentation, but needless to say, I'm a bit skeptical when I see information that we, as a community, are defining basic proficiency at thirty-seven and a half percent. Thank you.
I just need to clarify that that's your opinion, it's not really quite how it works, and Mr. Trammell will, will explain that at the presentation next week, so I look forward to you being there.
Thank you, it's the math on the handout.
Yeah.
School board comment. I'm sorry, there are only, I only see two other people, so I kinda just went over you there, didn't I? School board comments, Tara?
So, um, this is a school board comment, but it could be a public comment, because I, I actually have, uh, children at the middle school and high school. And I do hope that, uh, the public will come and see Mr. Trammell's presentation. I'm not gonna weigh in on standards-based grading versus traditional grading. Because I'm a teacher and I'm a parent, and I have my own personal opinions about it that really are my personal opinions, like everyone else has personal opinions. What I will say, however, is that, um, there is not a direct numerical correlation, um, as was just explained. Which, I understand it can be very confusing, and I would agree that the level of confusion caused to me is the main concern, because the fact that it can cause that amount of confusion, um, that we've heard, um, that's, that's, that's a big concern. But what I will say is that, um, proficient, basic proficient, exemplary, um, it is not a correlation to a percentage of right or wrong, that is simply not how the system works, so.
Who's the comment?
I'm looking at the two microphones, I'll just yell. When I reviewed the class sizes in the high school, I did not include AP or special ed classes, just so I'm on the record there. Uh, at our last meeting, I commented on our, our math SAT scores and noted that we've been experimenting with PACE and competency-based learning for almost ten years. Um, and Mr. Mason and Mrs. Mattel disputed that, um, saying it's only been a few years. But just to clarify, um, the PACE assessments were started in twenty fourteen, fifteen, but the PACE program, short for Performance Assessment of Competency Education, has been with us for far longer than three years. It was, it's more than an assessment tool. The DOE website's PACE page describes PACE as a, an entire quote "learning system" unquote, and quote "a powerful organizational change for the schools." It's a competency-based education approach, not simply a set of assessments. And also, the New Hampshire Education, um, Department has been committed to competency-based education and personalized learning since two thousand and five. So it's much longer than a few years, and finally, our former curriculum director, Ellen Hume Howard, who now works for the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, stated on her resume that she had been working on competency-based learning with our district for the past decade when she was here, so it's been a while since we've been working with PACE, just wanted to clarify that. And I wanna thank everyone from Fremont for being here tonight. We're definitely studying the numbers, and I actually do have the, um, test score results going back to two thousand and nine for grades three through eleven, but these are the statewide assessments, we're now looking at the, the local assessments that are done through the, the formative and summative PACE, um, assessments as well, so.
Those, those testing scores, though, are comparing the different tests that have gone over the ti- like, you're not comparing apples to apples, though, it's like apples to oranges.
No, because they've been changing the, the assessments over time. So when you look at it overall, our assessments have been flat over these years, but that doesn't mean the students are underperforming, it just means that some of the testing is more rigorous, for example. And then there are other tests we'd like to look at, like the Armed Forces Tests, so I think we're actually okay, but I wanna see growth in these scores, so.
Just have one comment, um, I appreciate the community, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and I know you've been speaking a lot about your concerns, and I look at your goal here as well, Fremont School District as, you know, you know, Fremont School District was sports staff and developing, implementing quality student-centered learning and assessments, et cetera. And that gentleman I talked to about earlier, it's about developing a meaningful accountability system. And that's what I'm hearing everyone talk about, because quite frankly, a meaningful accountability program truly does require, like, that each stakeholder in our communities helps us understand what does success mean. So when is that student's crossing as he or she's graduating, what does success mean for her graduating? Maybe it's just the fact that she's up there or he's up there. So what does success really mean from a community perspective? And what does the definition of success mean? And so when you go into your journey of creating this, obviously, it's all about taking in all the stakeholders' account. And you all actually influence the stakeholders that we are also part of. It's a joint discussion, is my point. And, um, so I asked the question, and for who am I or what am I accountable and to whom? The student. Me, I have my own definition of success for my girls that'll go through high school, whether in high school or when they graduate. It may not be the same as this guy's or his mom's. So going back to your indicators, what are those indicators? So I highly recommend we continue to explore this conversation, and I know our superintendent's been doing an awesome job at providing direction in these now, so, um, I think it's all meaningful and timely. Thank you for coming. Sick and all.
Yeah, um, I'd like to just, uh, say a few words about costs and class sizes. When you look at the Department of Ed website and you look at what the student-teacher ratios are across the board, you're gonna see that ours is lower than the state average. And the thing about that is, is that taxpayers and sustainability only are willing to pay certain levels of their income towards a school district. You could have class sizes down to five if the public was willing to support that. So it really comes down to what the public is willing to support. And part of our job is to look for ways to allocate funds so that the students get the best support that they can possibly get, but the taxpayers aren't overwhelmed so that they revolt at the polls every March and don't fund you at all, or you have to stick with the budget that you had the previous year or the default budget. So when you look at a measure, our indicators of class size, and if you look at the number of classes you have, and how many of those classes are twelve students or less, and the school board has a policy of twenty-five kids per class, that's quite a, quite a big gap. And then if you look at other districts and what they're paying their teachers, and you look at the size of those classes getting, and the teachers earning that pay, and you compare that with us, and we're paying substantially less, but we have much smaller class sizes, that's a negative economy of scale. So you have to, it's a big picture thing. When you look at these facilities, you look at the number of teachers, the number of students, you really have to look at that whole picture as one big area that kinda all has to be balanced in order for there to, to be, um, you know, an ongoing support of the school system. Otherwise, it's just not there. And so that's what we're, we're all talking about tonight, is, you know, how we can do the best for the kids, but how we can make this a sustainable, fundable district. And, um, we really have to look at all of this, and, you know, everybody has their arguments about how you can't compare apples and oranges or possibly class sizes, but you have to look at these as indicators, because that's all we have. The Department of Ed thinks these numbers are important, and that's what we have to measure with. I really applaud, uh, your goal of coming up with ways to assess Fremont students up against other state districts. I think we need to do better, more work on that ourselves, so that's all I have to say.
Second public comment. We have one more thing, uh, eight-one and eight-two, you're gonna push that on to the next meeting? Larry's not here.
I could do eight-two tonight. Did you want to conclude our joint meeting first, or?
Well, what I thought, well, we're, we're still gonna be in non-public, but if I understand it, you said it'd take about three seconds. So I'd like to get that done, then we'll have, then we'll go into the non-public, because if you're right, it's only three seconds, then I'm glad to do it now, rather than take a recess, non-public, and then come back and let's clean this up.
Okay, let me bring this one up first. Let me do the two of them quickly, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Hold on one second, if you would like to take a break for a couple, I'm gonna have a break as we clean out, but this'll hopefully take five minutes.
Yeah, not more than that.
Okay, so if you'd like to take a break now, because we're gonna be taking a break.
We have two policies that we just need to.
And then we're, and then we're done, and that way the public can leave, they wanted to say, well, so they're gonna be covering, because we'll be going into non-public. So I'm just kind of a cleaning up thing.
A motion for, uh, motion to recess, for a ten-minute recess. Okay. Did someone make a motion? All those in favor?
Yes, which ones are you gonna cover now? Eight-two?
So I'm gonna, eight-one, I'm gonna put off since we need to review that, and Larry wasn't here tonight.
So you're gonna put that on to the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
DBJ, I'm gonna go ahead with.
Yep.
I'd like a motion for first and second read. Mr. Baker was, asked us to insert some language, um, into this particular policy to mention that we're utilizing a qualified auditing firm. And we ran this by our business administrator, Michelle Crutau, and she said this is fine. She also wanted to add in this sentence, "In no circumstance shall the total amount spent exceed the total amount appropriated at the district annual meeting, nor shall any excess funds be transferred from the unemployment compensation line."
In, in other words, you, it's just stating what the law is.
You gotta buy, buy the law.
You can't go, uh, overexpend the budget.
Sure, so DBJ now includes a mention of a qualified, um, auditing firm as you requested, and that's the only change we have tonight. So I'd like to have a motion for first and second read, possibly.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
And I have one more. Our organization chart here, um, has a couple of changes on it. Budget committee used to be located across from the moderator, and it's just been moved down. The reason for that is mysterious, but it's okay with me. This is our, this is a CCA of the organizational chart. We made a few cosmetic changes to it, basically. Budget committee's been moved here. Another change that was made is, um, we have the superintendent's administrative assistant underneath superintendent. That is brand new, right there. What we've done is we changed some of the boxes to show the stream of evaluations, who evaluates whom, so we've added in some boxes here and there. So the superintendent evaluates the administrative assistant, so we've added that in, that's missing from our prior flowchart. And let's see what else, under principals, we've moved athletic director here, and it used to be a separate category under superintendent.
I asked the principals to, uh, evaluate the athletic director's.
So it used to be a separate box next to technology director, but now it's located underneath the principals.
Motion?
Cam, could you just read? Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Oh, motion for first and second read.
Oh, so move, so move.
Second.
Second, okay.
So, thank you.
Now, wait, a motion on this? That was the first second read, but now how about a motion on this change?
I was gonna explain all of the changes first, and then maybe do a motion to accept it all.
I'm the one that's got a backwards.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you to blow it up, thank you.
Yes, okay, sorry. Mr. Mason, did you have a comment?
I, I, I just have two quick questions, um, I mean, I'm, this is far from even really, you, you said that they're talking about the above and below, like, you see how the budget committee is below the super, uh, above the superintendent? Is that?
That's moderator.
No, budget committee's on the very left-hand side.
Right.
That, to me, looks intriguing technically, and then I also ask, so I'm just gonna say out loud, if you're talking about positioning for whatever reason, that does look awkward to me.
Well, the budget, if I can, and my, the budget committee has nothing to do with the school.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So it's, comes under the electorate.
There's a clear line.
Separately, separately elected.
Yeah, at one point, we had it up next to the school board as its own board, but we felt like it didn't.
Should, my only other question, I, I get it, I mean, I'm perfectly fine, I can follow the lines. Should there be a district attorney on here? That's not uncommon.
Uh, the district attorney would, would, we don't evaluate them, and the district's attorney, do you mean the DA, can you define district attorney for the record?
Uh, well, the district.
School legal counsel.
Our school legal counsel would be for me. Yeah, I, I wouldn't, um.
It's not unheard of.
No, and, and, but we don't retain one.
And you don't.
We work with multiple different ones for different reasons.
So the reason why I put it there, it's for your safety, sir. So we cannot go out and reach into the district attorney's discussion. So that's why I'm suggesting it's a branch off of you and not off of us.
Yeah, I think that's fine. So you, are you suggesting that it would kinda go up here?
Yeah.
And over and down?
Right.
Well, there's a problem with that.
Laser pointers.
The problem I see with that is we may have some disagreements with the school board that we would go to legal counsel, school board, I mean, superintendent. Superintendent may not even know we're going to them to ask some legal questions concerning the superintendent.
We don't have a budget to do that. We don't have a budget to go to.
The school board has a policy indicating that the board has authority to utilize legal counsel, and it's the board's authority, not the superintendent.
He's right about that, Corey.
True, yeah, you both are right.
Yeah, he is right about that, that if you had a, let's, let's say that I did something really odd or potentially illegal.
We don't even have the right to go in us, though.
Right, they have, the board can do that in that instance.
Is the position of the moderator, is that statutorily?
Yeah, that's right under the.
We researched that.
Okay.
I mean, just so y'all know, I'm, I'm fine with the way this is laid out, I can work with this.
So the moderator has some authority over the school board, or just running a meeting?
Running the meeting.
Running the public meeting in, in March.
Right, they can tell all of us to.
And he can set the date.
Yeah.
But that's why it's kinda like
Politically.
Down into the side, because it's a, once a year. It was there before we started this.
Also, director of academics used to be director of curriculum, and had no one below that position, but now we've added those two, title one and administrative assistant.
And that was hard, because really, the special ed director and the curriculum director would have input on staff evaluations in the sense that if there was a problem, they would talk to the principal, but the principal writes the evaluation. There was no real way to make like a crooked line that made sense to, I mean, this is just a general layout of who I evaluate and who the people under me evaluate. Obviously, I evaluate everybody, in the sense that if a principal has a problem with. Obviously, I evaluate everybody in the sense that if a principal has a problem with a teacher, it comes to me, right? If Michael has a problem with something, he would talk to that person and potentially me about the problem. But that's fine.
So these are, these three are new.
Why is the athletic director above the professional staff?
I understand, I don't understand, I still don't understand that.
You're an administrator. Athletic director's administrator.
But not of the professional staff, only of?
No, it, the athletic director really could go in the assistant principal box.
Okay.
Right, theoretically.
I kind of feel like they should be, they should be separate.
Remember, the athletic director evaluates the physical ed, the phys ed and the health teachers. They have, they work, they, they work.
The way that's set up, they evaluate everybody in the professional staff.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we tried to capture that they evaluate some professional staff.
Didn't work, huh?
Not for me, but I don't, I don't know that it matters.
It doesn't work for me either, but.
I don't know that it matters.
Double bars, principal, athletic director, assistant principals.
Right.
And then nothing under that one.
We were just running out of room, but no, the athletic director does evaluate and work with a department of teachers. Coaches, health teachers, phys ed teachers. So the AD has administrative responsibility for some professional staff.
As long as they know they're not evaluating the whole team staff.
Yeah, no, they know that, yeah. We break all this out as a team. No one, like one principal, so you could theoretically say that Brian is evaluating the elementary school assistant principal and teachers.
How's the public going to know that though if they're looking at this?
It's really for our purpose.
Okay.
It's not really.
Can we move it?
Yeah.
So those are the basic changes.
Okay.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Abstained?
I'm abstaining.
There we go, okay.
Because I don't agree with the flow and as a community member, I'd be challenged.
Okay.
Not, not to, I.
Go ahead, Stan, I'm fine, yeah. It's way better than what it was, let me tell you. When we started, it was messy. Fair enough. And we can revise it again next year, that's fine.
Next school board, I'm sorry, next Sandburn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, from six to nine PM in the library at the Sandburn Regional High School, that's right here. Agenda items, fellas, we have on policies, BDE-dash-E. Am I correct?
Yes, that sounds fine.
Okay. And that's Board Committee missions and statement of purpose, statements of purpose. Should have asked before I did that if there's any further, anything think of next agenda? I know we've got a very full agenda.
Yeah, we're going to have Michael Trumell come and present about grading. I've asked the high school administration to come and present about the professional learning communities, right? Because it's part, it's a pre-budget conversation. And then at some point in the future, we need to have a presentation about our data. But we'll talk about that at LISA.
Need a motion for non-public? Written right there.
I move it. We go into non-public session RSA 91-a, column three, two, CD.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, so, all in favor, Corey?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
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 Yes, that's by roll call unanimous?